Good afternoon. The time is 1:57 PM. The date is Thursday, June 5th, 2025. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and I'm pleased to call to order the regularly scheduled June 2025 West Palm Beach, City West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I'll first start off by asking our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Jonathan Burgess?
Here.
Christopher Hagan?
Here.
Emilyne Savage?
Here.
Sherry Hack?
Here.
I'll let the record reflect that Alfred Fields and Dana Pecot are not present.
Thank you. Based on that, we have four members present, all of whom will be voting members today, and we do have a quorum. So with that, we'll ask everyone to first please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated. The first order of business today is the approval of the minutes from the May 1st, 2025 meeting. Those minutes were provided by staff in the board packet that was distributed us prior to this meeting. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review them. At this time, we'll entertain, first of all, if there are any additions, corrections, or modifications to the minutes, and if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minute?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Vice Chair Savage and seconded by Member Hack. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved. We'll now go to a report from our Planning Division staff.
Chairman, Board Members Angela Van, Planning and Zone Administrator, I have no update or report at this time.
Thank you. Now we'll go to remarks by the chairperson. I've got two items. First of all, just a reminder to board members, including myself, that we received, you should have all received, a notification from the Florida Division of Ethics that requires that the annual form be submitted by July 1st. I know I still need to submit mine, so the clock is ticking. We've got basically 25 days to get those in and submitted, so please make sure that that gets, that that gets submitted, because I know that there are, if it's not submitted on time, there are potentially penalties that ensue after that. So, just again, a reminder. The second item is, I'll just go over the procedures for today's meeting. First of all, the matters before the Zoning Board of Appeals are quasi judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer a public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicants will make a presentation and answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation and a recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given an opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance at today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant will then have an opportunity for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed. The board will go into executive session for a discussion, a motion, and then a vote. And as a reminder, four votes are required for approval, so therefore, because we have four members present today, it would require unanimous vote. With that, that concludes my comments, and we'll now move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. I'll start off by asking our Board Secretary to please swear in the speakers, so anyone wishing to speak on any, on the case that's on our agenda today, please rise, raise your right hand, and be sworn in.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give? Is the truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. I actually skipped a step, which is for us to declare ex parte communications. So I'll move back and ask our board members, starting on my left with Board Member Burgess, to declare any ex parte communication.
As to matter case number 3452, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Vice Chair Savage.
As to matter 3452, I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And Board Member Hack.
As to matter case number 3452, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And for myself, as to matter case number 3452, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. With that, there were no continued cases on our agenda, so we'll now move into item C1, which is Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 3452. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Jessica Strange for a 20-foot variance from the required 25-foot front setback for the rear side of a double-frontage lot, as provided in Section 94-72A2A of the city's zoning and land development regulations, to construct a 216-square-foot cabana and adjacent concrete deck. The subject property, consisting of approximately 0.15 acres, is located at 336 Ryland Drive, within Commission District Number 5, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. With that, I will first ask the applicant to come forward and provide your presentation.
Hello. Let me find it. Can you show me where it's at?
Right here.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just click the next button? Hi, I'm Jessica Strange. I'm the owner at 336 Ryland Drive. I'm on a unique, structured lot, where obviously I have a double-frontage provision, and I want to construct this cabana in the back, next to my pool. It is a request for a 20, a five-foot setback instead of 25-foot setback. Again, for this accessory structure, I already have a pool back there and a previously permitted pool prior to me purchasing the property, and also a ton of foliage, beautiful trees, and a fence in the back of this property. As you can see here on the image before you, there is a bunch of foliage that will contain the vision of this structure, so you won't see a lot of this cabana house. There's plenty of trees, not only on my property, but my neighbor that's adjacent to me to the west on 345 Rustlin. He's the one on the cap end of my block. His backyard butts up to the west side of my property. He's one of the people that had given me a, a letter of support. This is the backyard view. As you can see, there is a ton of foliage, and it is really impossible to grow grass back there because of the shade anyways. So it's just either I deck it, or I create some type of storage for myself. I'm on a fifteenth of an acre, and I don't have a garage. So as you know, these older homes are unique, and they're cute, and I've done a lot to the house to keep the integrity of the 1953-ness of it. And I want to continue to do so. I'm not trying to make this look like a burden or an eyesore for my community. It's going to be about five feet from the fence on the west and south side, and about six feet away from my primary structure. While the south side of my property is considered a double-frontage lot, it's not fully functional, as you can see. Like, I wouldn't be able to have a driveway there. It, it already has a permitted pool there, and the driveway and the front door are both located on the north side of my lot. The south side is completely fenced in by a six-foot privacy fence. Again, everything was permitted before me purchasing this home, and the south side has an existing permitted pool, as I said before. This is the north side of my lot. This is going to be the front yard. I can't put a structure in my front yard while maintaining the code with, you know, 75% more of landscaping in this area. Again, I'm just trying to create a space that would be beautiful, but also enjoyable for me and my family, but some storage as well. Here is a visual of maybe like an artistic sketch of what the structure, the proposed height, and what the structure would look like from the backyard relative to my primary structure, as well as the architect drawings. This proposed accessory structure is only 216 square feet. It does not exceed the 75% of the gross floor area of the primary structure. The proposed site is within the requirements from the corners of my lot. It also is six feet away from my primary structure as required, and it's not exceeding the max 25 feet. It's actually set for 14 feet, which is just slightly taller from my existing main home, and this is because I'm trying to create some storage for myself. I'm an 80s baby. I have photos and preservatives of my life that I need to keep, keep a seed. So putting these things, or items, or keepsakes, if you will, into my attic, it doesn't preserve those properly. I need some type of air-conditioned storage here. Sorry, it's not going. Hold on one second. Is there a way to... Oh, sorry, I don't know how to use it. I'm a Mac girl. Maybe if I click on it. Okay, thank you. These ones, okay. As I stated a few times before, I don't want to waste your time, but there is a previously permitted pool in the back, which is an accessory structure, so I don't know if they obtained a variance before this to do so. I would imagine they had to. When I first purchased the house, I reached out to the city to get all copies of everything, and I didn't see that in there. Every swimming pool, as you know, should be enclosed by a fence, which it already has. There's no access from, people from the outside accessing it, and it should be through a self-enclosing, self-latch-in gate, which is what it does. For a double-frontage lot, swimming pool may be located along the street frontage. That is the predominant location of swimming pools along that street. The minimum setback for the water's edge is five feet, which it will be seven from my structure. And this is a view, again, looking to the west in my backyard. That is the neighbor's backyard that gave me the support letter. I actually have two neighbors to the west and the east of me that both gave me support letters to support this project. And the majority of this rectangular structure will be along his fence, our fence that we share, and in his backyard. And we both don't have any issues with it, because there's plenty of foliage that will cover, and again, it's not super tall. It's just going to be an extension of my existing, if you will, main house, although it's not connected. And there isn't, let me make a note, in some of these pictures, there isn't enough space to put this structure anywhere else on my property. I couldn't put it to the east of my pool. I don't have space, and we all know we can't do it in the front yard. So my variance request complies with all the standards for code compliance. Again, there isn't another location on my property that is, an accessory structure could reasonably be located. The request for the variance is being made in order to install a small-sized accessory structure in a location on the property where accessory structures are commonly located. So while 336 Ryland is considered to be a double-frontage lot, the north side along Ryland is the functional front of the property, and the property addresses are actually located on the north side of Ryland Drive. The south side along Rustlin Drive is not a functional front lot and has an existing permitted pool and fence, not allowing access to the property via Rustlin Drive, and therefore should allow for the five-foot setback, setback, and be an ideal location, according to our neighbors, in the location of this proposed accessory structure. Also, my address, being 336 Ryland, was an address picked by zoning, and I have a property directly behind me on Rustlin Boulevard, that is 336 Rustlin Boulevard, which has been a little bit of a problem getting shipments and stuff like that. So obviously, if my frontage was on that south side of the lot, I would have major issues receiving mail, packages, food deliveries. There was just an issue last night with food delivery from Uber Eats, and they delivered it to my neighbor's address. So these weren't numerical addresses that I chose. This is just something that I purchased into, and so I understand also, my street is one of the most unique streets in my area, with the burden of having a double-frontage lot. So I kindly request that you consider my proposal to build this accessory structure with the 14-foot height structure, allowing me to have a little bit more space to provide storage. It is not a two-foot structure. I think it looks amazing relative to the height of my current home, and I'm really excited to be able to put stuff into storage in there and have space for my 15-year-old daughter to kind of spread out in my 1,400-square-foot home. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I'll now ask our board members if they have questions of the applicant. Excuse me, I'll start on my right with Board Member Hack.
No questions.
Okay, Vice Chair Savage.
Are you asking for a height variance as well?
No, the, the recommended height variance, according to the City of West Palm Beach, is a max height of 25 feet. I'm just looking for 14 feet. It's been brought to my attention at the 11th hour by the city that they're putting in a provision for a 10-foot height recommendation, and I was told that Friday. So I've been really punctual and have given everything that's been required of me in a timely manner, five weeks earlier than the deadline, including my PowerPoint, my, everything, the drawings, everything that I've been looking to do, they've had. So I'm not crazy about the last-minute suggestion by the city, and it really puts a detriment of my storage, because really, that height difference is really a place for me to put storage. It's not a place for like, somebody to hang out, you know, a four-foot height difference.
Yeah, and the, in the recommended conditions, the condition two, from staff was recommending the building height be capped at 10 feet. It might be a good question to raise up, raise with staff during their presentation. Any other questions of the applicant?
No. No further questions at this time.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
No, very thorough. No questions for the applicant, thank you.
I did just have one question, which was related to the height. Is that measured to the, because I know that sometimes height can be measured to different benchmarks on a building. Is that being measured to the very top of the roof, or is it the bottom of the eaves, or midpoint?
The bottom of the eaves of my awareness, or to my knowledge, based on the, the architect's drawings.
Okay.
It's going to be a hip roof, so it's not a tall. It's just standard. It's going to comply and look the same as my current roof now. So there's, there's not an A-frame or anything. It's just going to be, again, for storage. And the height is just so it's not going to look like a cave when you walk in there. And when I was researching the code, making sure that everything was compliant, the 10-foot height cap was for sheds. I'm not creating a shed. I'm creating a cabana house.
Understood. Okay. No further questions. So we'll now move to staff presentation.
Can I have one question?
Oh, sorry, never mind.
I apologize. I just thought of another question while you were speaking. Is it, is it going to have plumbing as well, or is it just?
Yes.
Like a bathroom?
Bathroom.
Okay. Is there any other special, actually, I'll, I'll wait till the city comes up that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll now have staff come forward and make your presentation.
Good afternoon. For the record, Sandra Gerantjuk, Associate Planner. The applicant did a wonderful job presenting the case, so I'm not going to go over the items that were already covered, but I do want to point out a couple of things. So here's the site. Staff is fully supporting the cabana for the double-frontage lot because of the hardship that a double-frontage imposes on the property. And as the applicant pointed out, as we were preparing the report, staff realized that the proposed accessory structure height would have a negative impact on the street, and we acknowledged that this was later along the process of preparing the case. I want to emphasize the double-frontage lot, as we have already heard, in this property by which the applicant has a constraint due to the lot configuration. All the properties located in the block between Ryland Drive and Rustlin Drive are double-frontage lots, as you can see here. It is interesting to note that not all structures between Ryland Drive and Rustlin Drive have the main entrance located on the same street. As you can see on this slide, the blue dots represent, which are these two of here, the subject property and the adjacent one to the east, which are the ones that have both Ryland addresses and frontages in this block. And the red dots here represent properties that have Rustlin addresses and frontages along Rustlin Drive, including the properties on the south side of Rustlin, right here, that are typical single-frontage lots, with their front yards on Rustlin Drive. The proposed height for the accessory structure is approximately 15 feet, as we just heard, right up to where the roof starts. The challenge in this case has to do with the impact that a 15-foot-high structure, five feet away from the front property line, would have on the neighborhood street view along Rustlin Drive. You can see here some of the properties along Rustlin Drive, 331 Rustlin and 323 Rustlin, they have their frontages and their accesses there. To clarify the impact of the height, we can look at a double-frontage case that we just had recently. The, this is just to clarify how this is, this case was easy to find out which the rear frontage was, and there was no question about it, basically. The property outlined in blue has a double-frontage on Florida Avenue and on Alabama Avenue, and also some of the frontage on Old Street. And the applicant had proposed an accessory structure five feet away from the frontage on Alabama Avenue. In this case, the frontages on Alabama Avenue are typically treated as rear frontages, with accessory structures and garages established along the Alabama frontage here. And, and they have a commercial property across the street, and after that, they have a railroad track. So in this case, it was clear that the location of the proposed accessory structure was the typical rear side of the properties with frontages along Alabama Avenue. In our case today, though, the challenge relates to the fact that accessory structures along Rustlin Drive could potentially have a maximum height of 25 feet, while located five feet away from the front property line. Five, 25 feet is the maximum, as we had said, is the maximum height that the code allows for an accessory structure. And that would be detrimental to the overall view with houses that have their frontages along this view. And this is, we can see here the site plan, the two roads, north and south of the property, and here in yellow is the footprint of the accessory structure that is proposed. And here are the elevations. These are views, Rustlin Drive looking east and looking west. You can see, looking east, you have all the houses, the frontages along Rustlin, and looking west, too. So staff recommends approval of the variance, with two conditions. To limit the, one is to, as it says here, it will only apply to the proposed cabana, its proposed mechanical equipment, and currently proposed adjacent patio deck, and any other accessory structures within the 25-foot south setback. And the maximum building height will be 10 feet in order for the proposed structure not to be detrimental to the front yard aesthetic of the neighborhood. Staff has determined that a 10-foot height limit is the least detrimental height for an accessory structure, which is granted a variance to be located less than 25 feet from a property front line. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I will now go to questions from the board. I'll start off with Vice Chair Savage.
How tall is her house to the eaves?
The house is about 13 feet. I don't have the exact height of that house, but it's a little bit lower than the proposed accessory structure.
How tall are the bushes behind it?
They...
Pretty large, like, collusions behind it, it looks like, right?
The collusion's high. It's probably between eight and 10 feet high, and then there's a six-foot wood fence all across the front, enclosing the, the pool.
It looked like the collusions were significantly higher than the fence. Does the homeowner know? Do you know how tall those collusions are about?
Definitely well over 10 feet.
That's...
And so are...
We need anything to be on the microphone.
Oh, I apologize.
And it might be better, like...
Sorry.
And she will have a chance for rebuttal at the end. I don't know if it's, if it's best to do that, but...
I apologize.
But yeah, again, we just need to have everything on the microphone for the TV.
Yeah.
The, the code, the maximum height for the hedges is 10 feet, according to the regulations.
Okay. Is there any kind of problem with the fact that there's going to be plumbing installed, or, you know, the fact that it's going to be used for a bathroom? Is that any kind of concern for the city?
No. The only concern is that it is not a concern, because it was already stated to the applicant that it cannot be a dwelling unit, because the house is in an SF7 residential district, and so it can only have one residential unit, one dwelling unit. And this is just going to be a cabana. It's not going to be a dwelling unit. It cannot be rented. It cannot be used as a, as a place to, to live.
If this wasn't a double-frontage lot, if this was, you know, a budding, you know, just a normal, like, you know, back-to-back houses, how far back would a structure have to be?
Five feet.
Five?
For an accessory structure, five feet.
Five feet, okay.
That would be the, the minimum required rear setback.
Okay.
And, and side setback, too.
And, and what, I'm sorry?
Side setback would be five feet, too.
Okay. Okay, I have no more questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
So, and this is...
So, and this is single-family seven, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's why there's no accessory apartment, considering it's just an accessory structure that's allowed.
It's only an accessory structure, not an apartment.
Is there a maximum building height for accessory structures?
Yes, 25 feet.
It's the same as a primary structure?
Yes.
So really, this is just about because of the proximity to the frontage, the visual impact of that small setback.
Yes.
But the condition for the 10-foot height is kind of driven by that need for screening, which is there by existing landscaping. And there's an existing tree on that corner that's on the neighboring property that may or may not be impacted by root pruning activities on the structure and things. So there's a need to focus on the existing landscaping in place along that southeast corner, but that's not really a question. I should save that for the discussion, but I guess the question was answered. The 25-foot height is the maximum for an accessory structure by code, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions for staff?
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Hack.
Okay. So again, the maximum height is 25?
Microphone. Sorry.
What happened? If the maximum height is 25, so why can't she have the 14?
Because we believe it is higher than it should be to be able to have. What we're thinking is the view of the street on Russland Drive, it's all frontages, like frontage, frontages along the street with a 25-foot setback. And if it were 14 feet, it's closer to a two-story building there, and it would be too close to the street. And if more neighbors would come and they would want to have accessory structures close to the street like that at 5 feet, it would change, it would impact the neighborhood right there, the frontages along Russland. It would be not what it's intended by the planning of the street.
Her neighbors had supporting letters.
Yes.
For the 14 feet?
Yes.
This is just your zoning opinion?
Yes. This is the opinion of staff.
No more questions?
You can go again. That's fine.
Sorry. I have an additional question. So the plans that were given to the neighbors, because letters are sent out, correct, to all neighboring properties, and it specifically stated that it was 14 feet in those letters, correct? Like, this exact plan that she submitted was submitted to the neighbors, right?
No. It only said that it was a 216-square-foot accessory structure. It didn't say how high it was.
Okay.
Okay. Jonathan, I didn't know if you had another question. Okay. You know, knowing that, I think some of this is centering on the proposed condition number two, the reason that you arrived at 10 feet as opposed to 12 feet or 11 feet or whatever, could you speak to that? Is it because of the, I guess, comparing it to a shed or is there another?
Yes. It is comparing it to a shed, to a typical accessory structure that would be, if it were a typical lot and if this were really a rear frontage or a real area of the lot where it abuts to another rear of another house, there wouldn't be any need for variance because it could be all the way up to 25 feet. But it's so close to the street that we feel that 10 feet would be the least detrimental to the view of the neighborhood right there along Russland Drive.
Okay. So again, yeah, what I'm hearing you say is that because, so for example, if this were a standard lot and this were a rear, and it was a typical lot that had one front, two sides, and one rear, A, this matter wouldn't even be before us because they're meeting the setback criteria from a rear setback, and the height is also well within what would be allowed by code.
Yes.
So really, the matter in front of us today, it sounds like, again, I'm just asking the question, is the fact that we're dealing with two, a lot that has two front lines instead of a front and a rear, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Understood. I don't have any further questions. Does board have any? Sure, that's fine.
The application says 14 feet. You sent notices to people, I would assume, within, like, what, 500 feet?
500 feet around.
Okay. So wouldn't they know that it was 14 feet in height?
It was not in the mailer, so I, they don't know that it was 14 feet.
If they looked in the public records, they would know. Correct me? If they looked up the application in the public records, they would know.
Angela Van Penning, Zona Administrator. You have to remember, this variance is for the setback. The height had nothing, the request is for the setback. Staff put the condition on there limiting the accessory structure to 10 feet. So the original mail and everything that went out was dealing with the 20-foot or 25-foot setback.
And we, as a board, will have a choice as to whether we want to move that, include that condition or not when the motion is made.
Okay. No more questions.
I think that concludes questions for staff, so thank you. We'll now move, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I did not receive any comment cards today. I'll ask if there's anybody present in the chambers who wishes to speak regarding this item. Seeing none, I'll ask staff if there are any emails or voicemails or anything to be entered into the record. Okay, that was a no from staff. As we are aware in the staff report, there were, there was correspondence from adjacent neighbors who were in support of the project, so that is included in the packet. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. I will ask the applicant if you wanted to come forward and provide either rebuttal or concluding remark before we go into executive session. Okay?
Hi, Jessica Strange again. I'm the applicant. I just, if you had any questions, I'm here to answer them. But again, the reason why I made such a big emphasis on the height on this time around is I had to, at the 11th hour of Friday afternoon, this past Friday, less than a week before today's scheduled hearing, I was made aware of the opinion from the staff at West Palm Beach about the 10-foot height. Again, this was a variance on the double frontage, not on the height restrictions. I was well within the 25-foot max, and I wasn't trying to create an eyesore. There's plenty of foliage back there between my trees, my bushes, and my neighbor's tree. My neighbor actually helped me come up with the idea of this structure. He Airbnb's his house currently, and I see him all the time. And so I didn't have any issues with him when showing him the ideas. He even joined me in my backyard to have some coffee and talk about it. So this wasn't anything I was looking to impose on any eyesores. Again, my neighbors don't even see through my super tall trees that are back there that are well over 20 feet tall. I have five coconut trees in the back, probably seven fishtail palms, which are all out of the way. I don't have to do any landscaping to move them, obviously. So I took everything into consideration, and this wasn't something I just wanted to take a stab in the dark at. I carefully thought out and did everything to make it easy. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to executive session. So I'll start off with Board Member Burgess. Comments for the discussion?
Yeah. So, you know, on the double frontage issue, I mean, there's precedent in the city where we have, you know, streets where you have some of the frontage on one side and some of the frontage on the other by kind of existing use. And in this case, we have the existing pool on the south side, which makes it behave like the backyard, the collector on Russland that bring people out to you. And this one would be the only reason I would argue that the frontage would even be on the other side. But the address being on Ryland is another really good point that the applicant made about why the, you know, south side of the property should be considered the kind of rear and not the front. The height issue, I mean, if the building itself is proposed architecturally to have a roofline that resembles the architecture of the building and the landscaping that's in the front yard here acting like the backyard can screen some of that, and the applicant is willing to, you know, maybe enhance the landscaping to make sure we screen that visually as much as we can, which will reinforce the privacy and I imagine the use of the backyard. So finding some condition language that enforces the screening potential through landscaping, knowing that the height of the fence is limited to six feet and other types of vertical screening, but not necessarily imposing a 10-foot height restriction on a conditioned space because a shed is a non-conditioned space, and you can go up full 10 feet. But if you have to drop down and put, you know, air conditioning equipment or anything within that kind of, that 10 feet, it becomes harder to accomplish habitable accessory structure, which this is intended to be. So the sections and elevations provided in the application seem to reinforce some architectural thought in the building elevation. So those are my thoughts, just kind of on the height sensitivity and either just not necessarily imposing that condition of height at all or addressing the concern of staff of visual impact through landscaping enhancement instead of building restriction. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Board Member Hack.
I kind of agree with what he just said. I would disagree with staff limiting the 10 feet.
Okay. Vice Chair Savage.
I think that, I also agree with Board Member Hack. I think that, I think that the 14 feet makes sense considering what the landscaping looks like in that backyard. So I would, I would wonder if we could do the condition of the 14 feet as requested by the applicant.
Yeah. As far as discussion goes, we have the choice of either, whoever makes the motion would have the choice of either modifying that condition to say, you know, 14 or 15 feet instead of 10 feet, or would have the choice of saying that the motion is made with condition one and not condition two at all. Again, these are, we have the, as a board, have the option based on our review and findings in the matter of, we could, you know, staff often does provide conditions when they, when they provide us with a staff report. We have the option of not adopting any of the conditions or, you know, picking and choosing, you know, conditions and including some, not including some. We have the option of modifying conditions, and we also have the option of adding conditions. So really, you know, any of those are on the table. So I think whoever's making the motion can consider any of those options to be included.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll just add my two cents that, you know, I think, you know, first of all, I think, you know, staff works very hard and, you know, does, you know, take a lot of time and is looking out for the city and, you know, our code and compatibility. And so I fully understand the rationale behind the staff recommendation for that condition and, again, completely understand the thought. And then the, you know, also because I think Russland is a more major road than Ryland. It has more traffic on it, and so being sensitive to that and trying to preserve that. You know, on the other hand, you know, I know that it's this, I definitely feel for the folks that have a double frontage lot. It is a rare condition in the city, but it does impose, I mean, you really have no backyard if you're following the code because normally then if you have two front yards, that requires a 25-foot setback on both sides, which, again, is a, you know, a significant imposition on a property owner. And, you know, I think that, you know, Board Member Burgess, you know, noted, and I agree, that, you know, what's being proposed is very similar in height to the house itself. 13 feet versus 14 feet is what we heard on the record today. And, you know, again, the, I think the roof style is very similar. So it's not like, it's not like anything that's going to be towering over other structures in the neighborhood. It really will look like, you know, the house itself and, you know, kind of then fits in with that fabric of, you know, houses on the street as well. So, you know, again, I think that, I definitely understand, you know, that this, and it doesn't seem like it's, that it's going to create something, again, that's towering over others or would provide that visual, something that's a significant imposition that would be incompatible. Is there further discussion?
Well, I just wanted also to make an observation that there's an existing sidewalk on either side of Russland. So the kind of human scale perspective of walking down the street, that's kind of 14-foot or 10-foot is like, I don't even know, going 25 miles an hour in a car, you're going to notice the difference. So until we talk about sidewalks on the streets, I think we have to talk about human scale differently.
Yeah, that makes sense because it's, is sometimes often when you feel it the most is from the sidewalk, and there is none. Okay. Is there further board discussion? And if not, we'll entertain a motion. Again, the suggested motion language is in the packet on page 34 of the packet, and there are options for, again, all the array of options for conditions are there, which is either proposing the conditions as is from staff, remove it, no conditions whatsoever, modifying them or adding conditions.
Okay. I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant application 9452, or request by Jessica Strange for a 20-foot variance from the required 25-foot front setback for the rear side of a double frontage lot as provided in Section 9472A2 of the city's zoning and land development regulation to construct a 216 square foot cabana and adjacent concrete dock, deck. The motion is based on the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding a fact that each of the criteria in Article II, Section 9438, have been met. In addition, the granting of this variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach. The 20-foot variance shall apply to the proposed cabana, its mechanical equipment, and currently proposed adjacent patio deck, and any other accessory structures within the 25-foot south setback. The maximum building height will be 14 and 1/2 feet.
Before asking for a second, I did, I think if, and I may have misheard, I think that you had said application number 9452, but is application 3452?
Oh, I apologize.
So just --
Oh, I apologize. If I misspoke, I meant 3452.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Before calling for a vote, I'll ask if there's any discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, we have a motion by Vice Chair Savage and a second by Member Hack. I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Emily Savage?
Yes.
Sherri Hack?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes four to zero, so that is with a condition of no more than 14 and 1/2 feet for the height. So that concludes this item. Okay. With that, that was the only case on our agenda today. There are no administrative appeals, no unfinished business or new business or other business. I'll ask staff if there's anything.
No, no other.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay. I think it was, that's fine. It's moved by Board Member Burgess, and I'll take that as a second. Second by Vice Chair Savage. On favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. At 2:45 PM, the meeting is now adjourned.